It keeps getting me. Anyway, my name is Count Pair. I live in an area that's called Shallow Estates is what it was intentioned to be called. Over on the far side of Shallow and Rancho City Limits. And what I've asked for is something I actually, I spoke to the city council about, or maybe back up, spoke to the mayor about, just see the faults back in 2008 when I bought this property. And I kind of learned some things that, I don't know, have y'all ever realized that we live in an area that is kind of like one of those good old boys, you know, take your word and we're gonna do this and we're gonna do that? Then sometimes somebody drops the ball. And then somebody realizes they dropped the ball, they can start again, and the ball gets dropped again. So my intentions is not to come and try to make the city look bad, previous councils look bad, or anything else. I'm just asking for some help or guidance if we can all kind of look at this situation and try to resolve it. From what I found out, when I bought my property back in 2008, I kind of went by one of these good old boys' assumptions. I was told that the street coming down into Shallow Estates was a city street, okay? I never looked it up, you know, I had no reason to think that. At the time, the road was halfway decent, starting at Cumbrel Park, but anyway, as time went on, that's when I spoke to some previous commissioners and spoke to them, and they said, "Well, so you don't even live in the city limits at that time." You know, and I don't know whether it's good or bad. At the same time, I've also had business in the past. I know why it's locked off to have a dollar in your pocket when you're facing with the economy that we've all just went through. It's not a good time to be asking for a whole lot of help for anything. And so we've kind of just sat back and waited till I think that maybe now may be appropriate time, hopefully, that we can look forward and try to correct a problem that happened, and it's not really nobody's fault, and it's just one of these things that's kind of fell through the loophole. Is back when the property was actually set up and designed to be a shallow estate. Paperwork was done to create the plaque for that, and at that time, services paid for that, and the people that owned the property were just kind of out of touch with the reality of the full of needs and guidelines of what took to get the city to adopt that street, from what I gather, okay? And I may be wrong on 100% of this. It's just, all I can do is pick up bits and pieces because the original owner has passed away. Only his wife has still existed now, and she's not really one of these paperwork type people either. And so when we came around and had the property surveyed and platted out, that was recorded at the courthouse, in the public judge's office. And that street was actually a proposed street. And from what I've gathered, nobody's ever paid taxes on that property of that street because it's just been kind of laid in limbo. And, but, at that time, they were gung ho about, from what I'm saying, excuse my word, but they were just like, "Well, let's build some houses and get them sold. We just gotta get some money turning." And I think what it done is it went by, from what I'm seeing, is this is in development, paperwork's in place, let's go ahead and put some things forward, let's run some utilities, let's run some power, let's get some water, and let's get this developed, because it's in the works. And I think in years past, each and every one of us knows that's kind of happened. Nowadays, we're kind of looking at different approaches. We can't do it till we have paperwork in our hand, because we've learned from these type mistakes. But from what the private judge's office has told me, that that street has never been adopted into a street. It's still showing on their plaque as a proposed street, meaning that nothing from what they can find, or can I find from anything else, and maybe y'all have something that I'm just not aware of, is possibly somebody made the words or a paper saying, "Y'all have a easement down through here to run your utilities," or do whatever we need to do. Well, what the private judge's office explained to me and tell me, they said, "It don't matter what somebody said in the past, if it's not on paperwork, it's not one of the other." Why I'm not here to dispute that, you know? We all kind of picked up pieces, we lived there, and we respect everybody's utilities, and we need them, you know? So I'm not here to argue that. But at the time that we're looking at here, that road was designed in paperwork back in 1998, is when it started. I think the property owners had all this paperwork done, and they actually asked for some help and assistance verbally that come out because of friendship. "Can you tell us what it takes to get this road up to par and be adopted by the city?" They did so. It was looked at, there was no paperwork, it was just a verbal dealing. And I think those people that originally owned this property thought at that given time, when they paid for the services of the plot drawings, that they just assumed, "Well, now, city residents owns this road." And I think it's all on assumptions, you know what I'm saying? Because I can't find anybody. So anyway, neither here nor there, from what I've also found out, when I spoke to them previously before, I think you guys probably, when I say you guys, previous council, developed a more or less paperwork guidelines to say what the streets and everything had to be. And that was kind of done to stop somebody from creating a want-to-be residential deal and put this stuff something up, and I understand those type things. You have to have some guidelines protect you guys, you know? Somebody goes in there and says, "We just want a street and we want utility, then we're gone. We ain't gonna spend no more money on it." And y'all have to protect y'allself, and I understand that. But when I spoke to Sam Phillips today, I spoke to him several different times, but apparently he is one of the only ones of the other original landlord that's left, and she vaguely even remembers or recalls a lot of this. And she says she certainly doesn't know the laws, ins and outs. So anyway, what I'm looking at is our street has been falling apart to the point it's fell apart, okay? And it's not gonna get any better. I realize that it does not meet the city's ordinance of guidelines as of what they need to be today. With that being said, I don't know where we can go with it. I mean, I don't know if there's any help that you guys can give us, any guidance of something we need to do next. But it's kind of just went into the deal of everything I found. It's kind of one of these deals that we should have checked, each one of us landlords should have checked and make sure what this little section, it said that it was recorded on plaque book seven, page 129, in the Cal County Private Office. And when I went, and the only thing they had done was had the plot laid out, and nothing else had ever been done, and as far as I'm finding out, nothing's been done since then. It's been started two or three times.
Did you verify with Sam that the street and the houses are in the city limits?
Yes, and actually, I went and obtained a map that I took and gave one to this lady here, today Judy, that shows something that might be helpful to you guys on another little issue, because me and Sam have looked at it. Right behind that, there seems to be another plot of land that may be in question by these paperwork, that it's in the city or whether it's not. And whether it is or whether it's not, that's not really part of this, but their paperwork at the mapping office shows a whole different scenario than what Sam Phillips is saying he sees, or anything else. So, I mean, what I'm looking at, it's kind of like them here, they're sitting telling me, "Well, it's one of those deals, he said, she said, and nobody's ever done nothing, so we've just been waiting." And I asked the girl, I said, "How long you been waiting?" She said, "This goes back all the way to 1998." And she said, "Back in 2012, there was a little bit of stuff done, she said, "But it never got completed." And she said, "It's like they've started and stopped, and she said, "That's where it spans." And I said, "Well, the only reason I'm asking for help." The lady, which is Louise Teague, she's a respected lady, and I respect her with highest regards, but the fact that I don't want to cause her trouble, grief, or pains of no way, and my intent is not to, and I don't want the city to. In the same verse, I don't want the city to create grief for them. I'm just here trying to help, and hopefully, I can gain some help.
Yeah, as far as the street, I mean, we just have to get with Sam to see how far it is away from the city specs.
Mm-hmm. With that being said, I spoke to Sam today, and Sam told me, he said, "This actually is a deal, he said, "I know where Ms. Teague is coming from, he said, "I've known her for years." He said, "She thinks in line," he said, "I think this is the scenario. He said, "I think when I came out there and I gave them the paperwork of what it would take to meet that specification," he said, "They had Ronnie Bryant out there working." He said, "They came up, he said, "I told them they had one little flaw, get Ronnie back out there and fix that, and it would be good." She's going off of this again, as they had a verbal conversation saying, "Okay, then..."
Once that's fixed, it's good to go.
And for the whole time, Ms. Teague assumes that this has been adopted by the city because she did what they told her she had to do, more or less, if that makes any sense. So anyway, what I'm looking at, Ms. Teague's help has not been real good, and she's gonna be, each and every one of us will pass away tonight, you know? But she is the only leg of this that's still standing to the original landlord, if we needed her to help do anything. There, I've looked at all the stuff, and you know, which I'm kind of familiar with building roads, I'm not an engineer, but I do realize that at the end of our plot, there was only a small section designed to turn around, which is insufficient for what today's needs are. I actually built a spot at the edge of my house, and told the school bus, I said, "I'm fixing this," because the school bus was backing all the way back out of the street into the highway, and nearly getting hit several different times, I witnessed it. And I said, "Stop backing out in the street, I'll fix you a place to back it and turn around." And also, have I done that and offered the same thing to the city's garbage department? You know, "Don't back out in the street, I mean, turn around up here." And that worked, you know what I'm saying? There's only four houses down this street, it's not like that's a megatune, but there's one more little issue that really concerns a lot of us more so than that, okay? Throughout this whole time, we've all kind of just under assumption, okay? No matter what, it's water under the bridge. But at the same time, my neighbors like, "We pay taxes, we want to do this," and I told them, "Y'all just need to stay at home. You know, vinegar's not gonna get anything done. Approaching this and a little bit more calm our mind, I think maybe we can work out something, I don't know, hopefully." But this is one of the biggest issues. When all that was developed, everything was kind of pushed forward, and let's just get it going, and we need mail and everything else. So when they went to the post office and had the mailing routes set up either, my address, for example, 79 Shallow Ranch Road. This is the Cal Lake Estates, which has never, it's not even existed, because it's not developed, it's not even recorded to get, be on the plot. So if you call 911, or put it in GPS, they're gonna take you way over the road over there somewhere. All four houses does not lead to our location on 911 or GPS. That creates a little bit of a problem. I did go talk to 911 again today, and had it set up where my address shows now that road. I'm trying to make a little bit of efforts to do something, but she's telling me, she said, "I need the city to tell me that that's in the city limits for me to show that's even a road." She said, "It doesn't show on our last update of paperwork from the city that that road even exists, okay?" And she said, "I will give you that," and she gave me this and writing just to show the city, I mean, that I've been there and tried to make those amendments to it, but I can't do it without the city. So I went and obtained a blown-up deal of a revised, brand-new, up-to-date city limits, which goes to the back of my yard, all the way down to the neighbor's backyard, which includes the street and that provision. And I think that differs probably from what you guys are seeing, you know?
It very well could.
I mean, I don't know either, but you know, what I'm saying is, is I have that.
We've got a few other situations in the city like that, with homes built on, I would just call them like a driveway, private driveway, it's just all the owners understand that, you know, they just share it. It's not a city road, and there's complications with the 911 address, because it's back at the public road. As far as your road, you know, that's gonna have to be something that we just, we'll take a look at, you know, our street pickle, and we can give the sound, you know, maybe there's something we can work out to, for the city to take that street and then get it, you know, get it paved, get it up to some type of spec. And thank you by the way for the turnaround then, and for being a good neighbor and creating the turnaround for school.
Well, I mean, that's just being one of the good old guys. I mean, I think there's two of you here, I know that knows me from way back, and I think if both of you combined, you've been at my place many times in your past. I mean, there's no sense of trying not, you know, people don't want to work, people just create a hostile deal, and that's not me, you know? I mean, we're not gonna accomplish nothing but heads. And all I'm asking for is we can look into this and see if there's anything to be done. You know, it might be that it's water so far under the bridge, I don't know if we can go back and pick up the pieces and correct it, you know? Because the way it's standing now, there's no easement going down through there, there's a proposed rightway, but there's not even a rightway. You know, and so I mean, I'd just like to get it corrected some way or another where that one of the people in the street does have children, and they, I'd like to be able to know if I needed ambulance or something that didn't show up, and so me having to go get it down the street, so here I am.
Mr. Pair, just one thing to add to this, kind of a time frame. If we were, as a mayor and council, to do something with this street, the actual physical paving problem wouldn't be to commit to late summer, do that's when most of the paving gets done.
That's the only time you can do it at last. That's why I say, I'm not a stranger to it, and that's the only reason I'm talking now, is I realize that we still got a few bad months, but hopefully, maybe in the next few bad months, if we have time, we might be working toward looking at it, and by the time that the weather was fit, if we see that we can do something. The road has not fell apart beyond fixing real simple, but it's right on that verge right now. I think Ricky come out and looked at it Friday, and it's, once we go into this month of real hard trees and it starts falling, it's gonna take another beating again, which is even, it's gonna be that much more damage that it does to it. So I'd just like to try to look at it and see if we can capture something, if we can work on it to, so it's not a deep-pocket expense, I mean, even if we have to cut in and do some sharing expense to catch up something to bring it up, you know? I don't think that any of us is against that, you know? I mean, what we're looking at, I don't think it, I know the neighbors are not physically financially able to do a whole lot. I mean, I've actually kept the road up the last two years myself, spending my money on it, and my taking care of it, and I don't have that resources or abilities right now. And so what I'm looking at, I'm just seeing what can we do to maybe prevent this from going into worse situations, and hopefully better.
We'd be happy to look into it and see what we can do. Thank you. I got some personnel updates. Fire departments need to add a part-time firefighter, a full-time guy who's on leave in the National Guard, and they had a couple of part-times quit. Need to add that gentleman to the list. Alan, I was sort of planning on wanting to promote Brad running him as assistant supervisor. Brad's passed all his testing, and he's good to go on that. We got a resignation of the police department, Brett Spurlock, going to a different line of work. And the other one, of course, y'all know, Judy is retiring, and that will be effective August 1st. Now, she has sick time and built up that, by her, be at the office at the end of this We need to come up with a plan of how we're gonna ship to the city hall office, and how we're gonna cover Judy's, or the clerk's office in the five months during that leave time, and then the contingency plan moving forward. What, you know, what my recommendation's gonna be is, we've got Debbie in city hall, was trained under Judy for 10 years, familiar with city hall, familiar with the finances, familiar with the whole operation, as well as the sewer and sanitation part. My recommendation would be allow her to assume the title of assistant city clerk with a slot bump in pay for her to cover those five months of Judy's out on sick leave. What we'd also need to do is come up with, hire an assistant to train under Debbie and train in the sewer sanitation building part, because Debbie helps in the building and sewer sanitation, and if she's covering, her normal duties as the treasurer, and she's covering the clerk duties as well, that's gonna create a void in that, in that part. Does anybody have any thoughts on that?
My thought is more after Ms. Judy's retirement, but I think we need to go through the proper channels and post the job internally for the, a lot of time, I think we need to go and do that tonight. I put it under my name, I don't care who brings it up, but there may be other people in the city that are interested in the clerk job. I think it needs to be open for everybody to come forward, for those who want to. And then, a few of us have kind of talked and said that, you know, there's a committee that's formed among the six of us, that goes through the hiring process, and then let the best person get the job. That way, it's, we're not appointing, we're letting everybody that's interested in the clerk's position come forward.
We did that, we would have to wait five months before we could do that.
No, I don't.
Because you can't fill her job title while she still has a job title.
You can, you can still interview in the interim.
Well, we got the problem of...
I'm not talking about in the interim of how city hall's gonna be adjusted. My, my comment is strictly for afterwards, that I think we can start, we can post it, those who want to come forward and show an interest, they can come forward, best decide who the committee needs to be, and then start interviewing, because we've got plenty of time. Roger and I had been with Ms. Judy a while back, and, you know, that's just what we had asked, that we make sure that whoever that would have time does.
As far as, you know, as far as time with Judy, we've got like, you know, we've got a month. And so Judy's gonna have to go through the process, and I've talked with both of them about this transition. Judy's gonna have to go through the process of notifying people within the city and people outside of the city, agencies and people, of who the point of contact's gonna be, because the clerk is, by tradition, by practical reasons, is the first point of contact for most city things. And that's gonna take some time. But in order for her retirement to be effective August 1st, and her to get to use all of her time, we're looking at the end of this month. And so that's gonna create five months of limbo of, you know, how do we continue, you know, this operation in city hall until something's done permanently in all this? For, you know, for a bump in pay, and I've talked to Debbie about this, and she's okay with filling that role. Now, with her handling tables and handling the clerk job, she's gonna have to have a little bit of no matter, and it's her responsibility. So, there's something y'all would be okay with?
All right. Well, I'll think about it a little bit on that, just to see what would be the next direction. I think, I think posting the job because it's in the handle is the right direction. Whether we, we got a month, you know, to decide, you know, and she's gonna be turning that over anyway, but, I mean, we ain't got a full month, but we probably got at least two weeks to kind of think about it and decide.
They'd have to be revision made by the next council meeting.
Yeah, but that's a couple of weeks.
But that just leaves, that leaves two weeks for Judy to be working with whoever's gonna basically fill for the five months.
If it's Debbie, it shouldn't be a big transition, because Debbie should be trying to, she can do it, you know, Debbie should not.
But, you know, we need to be putting that groundwork in place.
But if we, I mean, why could Debbie not take over what she had been doing before we had the city treasurer?
We've always had a treasurer, it's just always been with the clerk. At the beginning of the term, we split them, we split them, created two jobs.
We had Ms. Judy, who's clerk, and I had...
And treasurer.
Okay, and then...
Judy was treasurer at the oil, and then we had, Debbie was the assistant city clerk. So we, we'd hired into the treasurer role, split the clerk and treasurer job, we had Debbie in the treasurer role, and we did not fill the assistant clerk job.
My, my main concern here is more to do with bringing in an additional employee. Until August the 1st, we're still gonna be paying salary and benefits.
That's right.
And currently, and I look at it as adding in positions or city hall positions, we actually have five boards physically located in city hall right now. That would be bringing a sixth person into the scenario for five months, and my concern is, what would that impact have on, on the overall budget?
It would, you know, it would be a temporary increase, and I see that concern, because I don't want to go, I don't want the payroll to expand. But the cost of getting, cost of operation, the cost of getting the job done is gonna increase when there's policies in place that allow young employees to accrue sick time, and then they can turn and use that to end with their tenure. Judy has earned, and I want her to use that, but that, that is a, that's a cost that the city eventually absorbs, you know? But you're paying her, and she's, and she's gonna be finishing up her time basically off. So a temporary increase, I don't, I don't know how we avoid a temporary increase, is what I'm getting at.
I don't see any way not to.
Well, then what happens once the city clerk has been named to that temporary position?
What do you want?
Okay, well, you bring in somebody right now, a temporary person to handle those accounts, once the city clerk has been named after August the 1st, what happens to that position?
I would say, I would say we leave that position. I think the best move would be, once the clerk's office is vacated, combine the clerk and treasurer jobs back together. Allow Debbie to assume that position, and then we'll have somebody on hand, we'll have somebody, we can figure out in five months whether it's gonna work out or not, and somebody that can train under her. You know, the job that Judy does in the clerk's office and the job that Debbie does in the treasurer's office is, would be an extremely difficult job to step into, regardless of what kind of experience you got, just the fact that everything in the city runs through those two offices. I mean, every, every thing that goes on in the city, they're more important, those two jobs are more important than, I think, I think they're more important than my job. I mean, they're there every day, and they're making it work.
One of the things that I've had some experience in is, is, I guess you'd call it corporate downsizing. We, at Farmers Telephone, we had a early retirement back, and I believe it was 2009, where we had 29 individuals opt for an early retirement. And what was done by our upper management at that point in time was redistributing of job descriptions. And all of a sudden, people had just a little bit more on their plate. And it has worked out well for us. And I was hoping maybe that was something that we could look into here, and instead of bringing another employee into the mix, see if we can delegate some of these job responsibilities internally, and have that savings in the overall budget, which will allow us to do more things in the future.
Yeah. I, I like... Yeah, I, I, I like it, I like delegating more and spreading it out. I don't know if, if, you know, if this scenario, it will work. If you looked at, you know, if you looked at combining, uh, the job, now the, the pay rate's gonna rise a little bit, but if you had someone working under that individual training, it would be cheaper than the two salaries we have now for those two, those two spots. So you would save savings, you know, in August and beyond. This transition time, uh, I don't, I don't see a way to reduce the savings. I think it's just gonna, it's just gonna be additional cost of, you know, operating under the circumstances, you know? So y'all, if y'all have a problem designating a, a plan for the, the end of, uh, so we can, so we can begin the, begin the transition, um, Judy, um, didn't, didn't go and enjoy life, um, and, and the city, the city park, the operation City Hall, you know, continuing as smooth as possible.
So this temporary assistant, what would their job description be? What would their job duties be?
It'd probably be, um, you know, it'd probably be a mixture of a whole lot of things. It would be somebody that would train, um, be trained under Debbie, um, learning things that go on clerk's office, uh, learning tables, bill pay, uh, learning sanitation, sewer billing and, and collection. Probably a whole, you know, a whole bunch of things. Uh, cause right now, you know, Debbie fills the treasurer role, she also helps with, you know, aides, uh, she live under in sanitation sewer part.
I think all of them do, don't they? I mean, Tanya's been in the window when I've come out. Don't Richard have to fill in a room as well?
Yeah, it is a, it is a group job.
Are there any of these duties that are, that you're looking at doing on the temporary position that could be transferred to say Ms. Carol Coleman?
Uh, you know, it's possible. It's not gonna, there's not gonna be anything, any kind of dues that need to be moved out of, out of City Hall a little bit. They all of them are one of them.
My personal feeling is I would like to post the job per our resolution. And then if Debbie ends up getting it at the end, so be it. But I, I think that everybody, I think it needs to be posted internally for anybody that's interested and has to go through the proper procedures that we've put in place. And yes, I do think there needs to be a plan made, but this is the first time I'm kind of hearing about all of this, and I'm, I'm not ready to vote or say either way tonight.
The first time you're hearing about?
This plan of yours.
Yeah, well, you know, this is something that me and, and Judy and Debbie sort of come up with, but, you know, I look at it as we're out of time, you know? We've known for a while that Judy was gonna, uh, retire, and, and I'll take, I'll take part of the blame to laying better groundwork and make a contingency plan of, of how things will keep, keep going. But, you know, we've still got those five months that we have to, you know, we're gonna have to deal with. And, you know, assuming that Debbie's gonna pick up the slack in the clerk's office, especially without any additional pay, um, I just don't think it's acceptable, to be honest.
I'm, I'm not saying either way, I'm just saying that I need to, this is a lot right now on this whole plan, so I'm, I'm, I would like to think about it. I'd like for us to go in and post the job, um...
But, but the posting will be for August?
The posting will be to start in August. I think we can start filling the waters.
Yeah, you can, you can fill the post in August, but five months before August?
Five months without, what he said.
Oh, I know, I, okay, I understand that. What I'm saying is I'd like to post the job for those that are interested to become, there's, there's no harm in filling the waters out. If she's the only one that puts her name in the bucket, so be it. But I feel like if we're gonna have ordinances and resolutions, we need to try to at least go through the proper channels and do that. I understand that the job filling will only be August one, and I know there needs to be a plan in the interim. I'm not saying her work for free, I'm not saying any of that. Like, I need to think about the whole plan. I just need to think for, for a minute, cause it's not a, to me, this is not a quick decision.
Also, one of the things that we could consider is, i- if you're gonna combine the job title of clerk and treasurer as it was prior to this administration, um, we may wind up utilizing Ms. Betty Holcomb a little bit more to do some of the, uh, the accounting work. And then if we can delegate some of the, um, sanitation sewer billing to other individuals inside the city. The assistant position may not be necessary. And in the long run, we may be able to do the current workload with more and less employee than, than what we currently have. And, and that would be my ultimate goal, uh, as, uh, to try to save some money.
I, you know, I would, uh, I would love for that to be the case. I'd love to combine some jobs and downsize. I don't know how this particular case will, you know, work, you know, work for that, for that model, but, uh, yeah, I'm, I mean, I'm open, I'm open to that.
Well, this is my opinion. In my opinion, I think Debbie has earned the right for that. It was a big deal, we've got a five month gap, and to me, I don't see how you could even contemplate trying to wanna bring somebody else in while you've got somebody that knows what they're doing from one end to the other.
Yeah.
That's my opinion.
She's, uh, she's trained under Judy for, you know, ten years. And she's, she's well followed by her peers, she's the current...
To me, it's her job to lose, in my opinion, but if you bring somebody else in, they can be brought in as it is at temporary base, and if we decide that, hey, we can push that job to other people in the office, you know, it's a temporary job. You're not saying that you're gonna give somebody a full-time job for five months?
Yeah. So y'all have a duty coming tonight as far as, but I don't mean permanently, just, you know, some plans to, uh, you know, take care of the climate.
I might think about it in the next meeting, see what, make sure that, you know, we're gonna go in the right direction. Debbie does the right job, I haven't got a problem with it. I just, you know, I wanna, I'd like to really think about what Joey was talking about, like downsizing, make sure we hit the right scenario, what might come up with, uh, you know, if we think about it, cause we, I didn't know Debbie was bringing this up tonight, about Debbie, I, I didn't know about that, I guess I shouldn't have, but, you know, she knows the right job.
I bring it up, I bring it up because, you know, I guess the whole situation's sort of been an elephant in the room, because we've known Judy was, was leaving, we just, we just didn't know when. And, you know, we're now less than a month out from her, uh, going to the house, and, yeah, we just, we gotta, we gotta do, what we gotta do is make sure the City Hall, uh, continues to operate at the way that it needs to. Uh, that's, that's all I've got.
Um, I, I have a few things on the agenda here, made a few notes on this too, also. We had to do a complete new brake job on, uh, the side loader, uh, Garret's truck.
We're, we're white ties to councilman, what is going to happen?
Up, up to y'all.
Other than the job is a woman.
No, it's still in yours.
Yes.
All right, so the meeting will come to order. Graham.
President.
Ledbetter.
Here.
Freeman.
Here.
Y'all have a chance to look over the minutes.
Yes. I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes as presented from the city clerk and dispense with the reading of...
Motion by Graham, dispense with the reading, set the minutes as presented, second by Lingefell, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Got a, a list of personnel items there that I would, uh, ask for approval for, uh, and also I would add that I would like to, um, at least go as far as, as being able to designate the assistant clerk job to the, our treasurer, um, with a small bump in pay, uh, to begin the transition, uh, of Judy leaving. Because we are running out of time and, uh, you know, a week or two's time, I do not feel that will be sufficient to, to transition her out of office. And what I fear is, is Judy may leave and it will be a situation where we're having to call her back in a whole bunch. And I don't, I don't think that's fair. You know, she, she's using up her time, she's using up her time, and she's...
And that's what we're talking, what she goes out, she is not supposed to.
You said, "Don't mess with telephone."
Yeah, that's right, that's right.
Are you making that into a motion?
I would like for y'all to, I would like for y'all to approve, approve, approve that, and of course the list of personnel, um, moves.
Like I said, I myself have no problem with it.
You putting that in the power?
I put it into a motion that we make Debbie the assistant clerk.
And begin, begin the transition.
Right.
Any other, any other support for that? That is for lack of a second.
I'll make a motion that we accept the, uh, pilot notice of both Ms. Judy Lewis and Officer Spurlock. As, well, I was making that, that would be, I'll have motion, I believe I'll do it.
I'll second that.
Motion by Graham, second by Ledbetter, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
I'll make a motion that we promote Brad Willingham to Assistant Waste Water Treatment Plant Supervisor.
I second it.
Motion by Graham, second by Freeman, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Can we, can we play Tom? Well, it doesn't matter, I'll make a motion to fire Billy Casey as a part-time firefighter.
I second it.
Motion by Ledbetter, second by Lingefell, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Uh, we had, uh, on, on the, uh, side loader, we had to do a complete brake job on it, uh, at Black's Tire, and it went a little above the, uh, spending threshold, it was $1,069 to spend. Uh, I moved it and we paid that, that bill.
Motion by Graham, second by Ledbetter, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Now, we did, this is, this has not happened all at once, this happened over a six-month period. We had to get, uh, some of our dumpsters repaired. Uh, we had five eight-yard dumpsters and four four-yard dumpsters that we took to J and S Welding. Uh, we did receive the bill, uh, this month for the prior six months, and it was $2,840 to repair all nine dumpsters. Uh, I make a motion that we, we pay that bill also.
I second it.
Motion by Graham, second by Freeman, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
I have a resolution here. Uh, the resolution is, uh, the separation of the Ransville Beautification Board and Tornado Memorial Board and establishing members of the Ransville Tornado Memorial Board. Uh, I'll just give a quick read-through of this right here, and before I do, I, I would like to commend everybody on the Beautification Board for the, the good work that they have done, um, since we have combined the two. But this would be actually separating the two and establishing two, two separate boards. Whereas the Ransville City Council had previously decided to combine the Ransville Beautification Board and the Ransville Tornado Memorial Board. And whereas the original Tornado Memorial Board surpassed all expectations in regards to fundraising, design work, and construction on an expedited timescale, resulting in an elastic memorial to those who passed in a place of comfort and dignity for the family members of the victims to mourn. And whereas the Ransville Beautification Board has been excellent stewards of the monument as well as money, as, as well as monetary donations that have been raised from many sources all across DeKalb County. And whereas the Ransville City Council now wishes to entice as much community participation as possible and help create and foster a sense of community in this great city of Ransville, Alabama. And now therefore, dead resolved by the City Council of Ransville, Alabama, that the Ransville Beautification Board will remain as is and the newly formed Ransville Tornado Memorial Board, which will have the responsibilities of maintaining and preserving the memorial as well as being conservative stewards of all donated funds that are kept in a separate city account and coordinating annual events to honor those souls taken from us on that dreadful day, will now consist to the following honorable members. Elizabeth Coops, Peggy Mitchell, Chairman Linda Samples, Carol Lee Forman, Pam Clay, Peggy Vennfield, and Bijon DeHerry, to serve as committee members until they resign. I make a motion that we accept this resolution.
I second it.
I would like to say something before you do that. I would like for you to, to, uh, tell about the money and the account, how much you spent, how much you spent on this stuff.
There is a balance in the count of, uh, $21,587.68. And the only thing that really they have spent is, is for the maintenance and upkeeps of the lights, and, and they did add a aluminum table, which was brought before this council. Uh, and that aluminum table was put in the water feature and covered with, uh, stones, cause the, the pump in the, the water feature had, uh, I, I believe it had gone out, and, and this was a way to remove the water feature, but preserve the overall look of, of, of the memorial. Uh, as I had said before, the Beautification Committee has been excellent stewards of, of this memorial fund, as well of the past memorial.
There's a motion, a second on the table, so any other discussion? I would like to add that, um, I am happy and pleased that, uh, we're finally to a peaceful resolution, and, uh, I think this is probably best for all involved. You know, it's regrettable that in the past, things got messy, and I hate that. But, um, like I said, I'm proud that we got a peaceful resolution, and I'm looking forward to working with the, the new board. The, the other bunch did a good job, and I'm, uh, I'm sure the new, the, the new folks will, will do the same, so. Motion and a second, all in...
Motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
We also have a ordinance. This is an ordinance to establishing a tree board for the city of Rainsville, Alabama. This ordinance is in conjunction with us coming a Tree City USA. And I would like to make a motion that we suspend the rules of order for immediate consideration of ordinance 2-2-15.
I second it.
There's a motion by Graham to suspend the rules of order, second by Freeman, it's like a roll call vote, Graham?
Yes.
Ledbetter?
Yes.
Freeman?
Yes.
Lingefell?
Yes.
I vote yes.
I make a motion that we pass and adopt ordinance 2-2-15.
I second. I got a motion by Graham to pass ordinance 2-2-15, second by Lingefell, it's like a roll call vote, Graham?
Yes.
Ledbetter? Freeman?
Yes.
Lingefell? I vote yes. Motion carries, ordinance passed in.
At the last meeting, I had mentioned that we was going to open, or submit for bidding for two items, a new tractor and a new lawnmower. And Miss Judy, you do have the spec sheets for those, correct? Okay. Now, here's a question. Are we wanting to bid this out as a combination of both a tractor and a lawnmower? Or we want to do a bid for a tractor, a bid for a lawnmower?
I think you need to, I second. I'll do it, I'll do it second.
Okay. Well, I'll make a motion that we accept bids for a new tractor.
I think he's got them on there together, but separate, the bid specs are separate.
Can we do a bid, have them bid three different ways, individually, and then as a group, see if we can get a better discount as a group?
You won't, Miss Jean.
Okay.
I'll do it separately.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept bids for both the zero-turn mower and the new tractor per this spec sheet.
I second.
A motion in second. I have a quick question. You won't say, you won't say any trying to do packing, you know?
Through the discounts, if they're gonna get, you're gonna get dropped by them, what they can do, and they're not gonna cut them anymore on package.
We don't, we don't have that in your book. February 17th.
Motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say aye.
Okay. We had gotten some statements back, some revised quotes from Raymond James on the proposed refinancing of the 2005 Series A and Series B bonds. The city has a chance to save a substantial amount of money over the next 20 years with the refinancing of these bonds. And, well, I guess, do we, to do this, is it a motion to move this forward? I believe there was another quote, correct? And it may not have been as competitive as what we got from Raymond James.
It was, it was really close. But I talked to you today about talking to Brad, and they're gonna come down off that issuance fee, so with this, that was really the reason to sort of shop, you know, just kind of keep it competitive. But maybe, maybe save around 10,000, I don't know, off that issuance fee, so.
So even if they were late?
And actually, rates had dropped, and so, what were initial projections, savings over 20 years, a little bit, 120?
About 120, I think it was 117 and change. And now it stands at 174, eight. So, standard.
Same thing, yeah.
So if you get that issuance fee off, it's not going to be a little bit more?
Yeah.
Now, to move forward with this, is this a simple motion? To move forward with Raymond James to refinance the 2005 Series A?
I think the mayor would have to sign an engagement. I figure the math on this, and you figure it's gonna be a little under 9,000 a year savings. So, no problem, it's gonna be a little expense to do it, but it still saves.
You know, they gave us the wording that we needed to actually have for them to proceed with, remember that?
Do they remember that?
It's like a, like a wording that they had.
Yes, ma'am. I remember that.
I think a motion to proceed with an engagement letter should be sufficient. Do you not believe that?
You word it how you want it.
I'll do it if I'm as weak. I'll do it if I'm as weak.
To engage with them, to.
And then if we need, at the next meeting, we need to make specific language in the motion, we could do so.
Just, you know, just a motion to authorize me to sign an engagement letter with Raymond James and move forward on this.
Can I just say what he said?
Yeah.
I make a motion that we authorize the mayor to sign an engagement letter, authorizing him to begin the refinancing process.
I second it.
A motion by Graham, second by Freeman, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And believe it or not, I just have one more item on here, and I'm done. Our next meeting is scheduled for February the 16th, which is President's Day. Would we want to move it to the following Tuesday, to the 17th?
Sounds great.
That's fine.
Okay, we don't have to have a motion for that, do we?
No.
Just public notice.
Yeah.
Okay, I will be quiet for the rest of the meeting.
Just a quick update on the Imagination Library, we now have over 100 children that have signed up, and of course, that's just Rainsville resident children, so it's good that that's growing, and we should get our additional 5,000 from AMR, BCND, from our 5013 partner. I'm not going to say anything about the clerk's job, since we're all gonna work on what's gonna go on there. Did you want to post the police job, or do you want me to?
You know, I didn't bring that up because the chief was out all last week, I went to the chief's conference, and I hadn't had a chance to talk about, you know, what the plan is, so I've got plans to do that this week.
Put that off to the next meeting.
That's probably my suggestion.
Okay. I would like to make a motion to buy a UV light, to put in the duct system at the annex, which is still currently at the basement of the police station. We're still having moisture issues in the air, and there might have to be additional work after that's done. It's $700 that we got quoted from the Kelp Refrigeration. I'm bringing it up just in case there's additional fees, I'd like to ask for around 900, just in case they get in there and there's something else that needs to be done. I just wanted to cover my bases.
I second. Motion by Ledbetter, second by Lingefell, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And then, Miss Ashley Thomas is resigning from the Tom Bev board, she has a lot of personal stuff going on, all positive, good stuff. More babies coming, so she is resigning her duty, she doesn't feel like she can fulfill those anymore, I don't have a replacement for her just yet, because this was just done, so I'm just making a motion to accept her resignation.
I second that motion.
A motion by Ledbetter, second by Graham, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I completely forgot, I didn't get a copy, but Nathaniel resigned from this board a few years, so there's a vacancy on the aggregate, of course, that was back November after the election. I don't know if it's a spot that has been filled, but they're one short than what they typically are. So, I can get his letter, I think he's off the line, Tom, but just be thinking about that. Graham?
We had, one thing we have, just kind of progress report, we've had last two weekends, basically all sign-ups, and we have approximately so far 250 kids. So, it's gonna be packed again. And that's really all we've got going?
Well, the only thing I had is, I talked to Sarah at the library this week, and we were talking about ERATE, and she might want to discuss this a little bit about the ERATE stuff, Sarah?
Well, for those who don't know, ERATE is a federal funded program that allows educational entities to receive reimbursement of telephone and internet appeals based on the school area produced in free lunches, which the Cal County is 80%. So we've been receiving 80% of our internet and telephone services. They are going to begin cutting out telephone services beginning this year, 20% every year. So, beginning this year, we will be receiving 20% less reimbursement every year. So that's just kind of much on it.
Is that just for municipal libraries?
This is across the board, schools, libraries, everywhere. They're gonna continue giving that service.
So, what it means is it's gonna put more burden back on the city, it's gonna get the ERATE, you know, to cover that, so that's, that's gonna, it is gonna happen to the schools and everything like that.
Any idea what kind of increase?
No, not that often, it should be a tremendous amount, but a little bit.
The bills?
Too much.
Telephone bill for last year was below 1,500. That's the complete bill.
So about $400.
Yeah, I told my dad. How much do you pay the bills?
I second it.
Motion by Ledbetter to pay the monthly bills, second by Freeman, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. A motion to the general.
So good.
Motion by Graham, second by Ledbetter, to turn the, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say aye. Motion carries.